Can anyone hear me?
Need me to test this? Testing, yeah. Justin, are you on?
Test, test, can anyone hear me?
Yep. We can hear you.
Perfect, yeah, this is Justin, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the September 21st, 2023, meeting of the City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission other than site plans and subdivision plots unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with which, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be determined to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Do we have a quorum? We've got just, we do, okay. All right. If I can get a motion from a commissioner to approve the September 7th commission minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Justin, how do you vote?
To approve.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
I will now read through the consent items on our agenda. And number one, a request from 106 Southwest 7th Street, represented by Tim Ripma, regarding the vacation of 144 square feet of air right-of-way and 40 square feet of surface right-of-way adjoining property at 106 Southwest 7th to allow the, to allow the encroachment of a new balcony and existing ground floor door swings within the Southwest 7th Street right-of-way. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to hear this item in the public hearing? Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like this item heard on public hearing tonight? Okay, seeing none, item number one will remain on the consent agenda. Item number two, a request from Neighborhood Development Corporation for review and approval of property located at 2211 University Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to have this item heard tonight? Okay, is there anyone on the commission who wanted to discuss this item? Seeing none, item number two will remain on the consent agenda. Item number three, so request from Ririn LLC for the property located at 1500 East Army Post Road for determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, to amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification from business park to community mixed use, and to rezone the property from EX mixed-use district to CX mixed-use district to allow the redevelopment of an existing building and the construction of a future building as an auto body shop. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item in the public hearing tonight? Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item tonight? Okay, item number three will remain on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Justin, how do you vote?
To approve.
Yes?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we have some items that would like to be continued. Item number six, a request from Starlink LLC for property located at 1900 Arlington Avenue. Is there any, yeah.
Oh. Yeah, Chair, member of the commission and the public, I just, we'll provide a little rationale as to, the applicant has requested the item be continued, allow further time to look at their project. It was continued from a previous meeting, they have met with neighbors and are trying to see how they can incorporate some of those comments, so that's the purpose of the continuation.
Okay. Is there a motion for each continuance? A motion from a commissioner to continue item number six to the October 5th?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Justin, how do you vote?
To approve, yes.
Thank you. Item number seven, a request from Kenyon Hill Ridge LLC for review and approval of a second amendment to the Ruby Rose PUD conceptual plan to allow adjustments to the general layout and to increase the number of dwelling units from 65 to 73. This item has also asked for a continuance to the October 5th planning and zoning meeting.
Yeah, and just to update the commission and the public, the applicant is wanting to take a little, take a step back, relook at the proposal, possibly make some adjustments to address some feedback that they've received. So this would be, if the commission votes to continue the item, it'll be heard at the October 5th meeting and then we'll have an updated, updated material at that point and see what changes have been made to their design.
Can I ask a quick question on that one? Unlike typical site plans or things that we approve, all of those comments that were requested to be included in the approval were in the text of the, the body of the city report. Why weren't those things included in the actual PUD plan or site plan? Or are they going to do that? There's like 17 items or something like that.
Oh, 17, add the staff, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So those are recommendation, those are conditions of approval that we're suggesting, and so those, if, if those get adopted, those would be requirement, there'll need to be notes on the plan or they'll have to make adjustments to the drawings to reflect that, is that what you're?
Okay, so this isn't a site, it's different from a site plan and it's so, okay, because it was like all this stuff, why isn't this just in there?
Yeah, no, great question, I'll take a step back. So this is a, a plan unit development or PUD.
Uh huh.
And so you really have two, there's the conceptual plan, which is really like setting your zoning, and then we have what's called the PUD development plan, which is really the site plan, where you really get into the details. We are at that zoning, that front-end zoning stage. I know with, because it's drawing-based, that looks a lot like a site plan, but it's really, we're kind of setting more parameters at this time. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
I think, sir, if, did you just have a question about process or were you wanting to speak on the item?
Will the public be able to be heard on the 5th meeting?
Yes, when we have the item in the public hearing, yes.
We're not going to do that tonight, then?
No, because it's really best to have the, the public process, all of the comments, all the record at one time, and then, that's, protocol-wise, that's what we need to do. So if you're able to attend on the 5th, I encourage you to do so.
Okay, I'll be at the 5th.
Yeah, I do apologize, this came in fairly last minute.
All right, thank you.
There was another hand? Yes, ma'am. Oh, you're, you're, the applicant's representative, okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate it knowing you're here.
Okay, can I get a motion from a commissioner to continue item number seven to the October 5th Plan and Zoning Commission meeting?
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Justin, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay. All those against? You didn't raise your hand, Francis.
Are you?
Are you against or were you for? Support of the continuance? Okay, thank you. Throw me a pearl there. All right. Our next item for continuance is number eight, a request from Larry Chapel and Daryl Chapel for the following regarding properties located at 4150 East University Avenue and 1207 Williams Street. Determination as whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Before I go on with this, I'll just say that the plan is to continue it indefinitely at this time, so.
Yeah, just the, the, in this case, we're not, the applicant isn't asking to move to a specific date, they are revisiting their proposal, and so if they come back, we will do, because it's in, what we call an indefinite continuation, we will actually re-notify everybody that received a notice this time around. So if it, if it does come back, there'll be a new notice, you'll be made aware of the meeting date, so you don't have to kind of, you know, wonder, you know, when and if it's coming back, you don't need to track the calendar and like that, we will, we will mail you a new notice.
Right. So again, if there's anyone who came for that specific item, it is going to be continued and not be heard in the public hearing tonight. Can I get a, well, as long as we get a motion?
Do you have a procedure question or?
There will be a meeting on October 5th, if this is intended?
Not for item number eight, no.
Okay, so will we get a move, we have a notice, like these cars?
Yes.
For item eight, yes. Yep.
Yeah, if they, if they decide to move forward, you will receive the same notices that you received this time with the new dates.
Okay. All right. Again, I apologize for the continuance. Can I get a motion from a commissioner to continue this item indefinitely? All right, thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Justin, how do you vote?
I vote to approve.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to make the motion, but I wasn't quick enough.
Motion carries.
All right, and the final item for continuance is item number 10, to continue it to the October 5th meeting. It's a request from IA14 Des Moines LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Silverster Car Wash, 3600 East 14th Street, for type 2 design alternatives. And this one is being continued to October 5th.
And again, this applicant is wanting to see if they can address some, some comments and maybe work towards some of these standards, so looking at the design a little further, need a little more time to do that.
Okay. Is there a commissioner who would like to make a motion to continue item number 10 to the October 5th meeting?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Justin, how do you vote?
To approve.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Okay, that covers it for the consent and the continuance, and so we will move back to item number four. A request from Thikra Mahawi for vacation of 160 lineal feet of the north-south alleyway located in the vicinity of 1013 Scott Avenue, bounded by Shaw Street to the south, southeast 11th Street to the east, and southeast 10th Street to the west, to allow the vacated area to be assembled and maintained for private use. And Bert from staff is here to present.
All right. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. As the chair just read, it's for vacation of a section of undeveloped alley right-of-way. The map on the screen right now shows the location of this right-of-way, it's just to the, excuse me, north of Shaw Street. There used to be an undeveloped alley right-of-way that went across the entire block, but about four years ago, the northern portion of the alley was vacated and then has since been conveyed to the property to the east at 1013 Scott Avenue. The applicant for the request tonight is actually the owner of 1013 Scott Avenue, so I just wanted to put, put out there that the commission's charge is just to determine whether the right-of-way is needed for a public purpose, it really isn't the commission's charge to decide who the right-of-way ultimately gets sold to. It is the city's real estate division's policy to sell half of the adjoining alley right-of-way to the adjoining properties, so theoretically, the properties to the east should have first right to buy the east half, and the properties to the west should have the first right to buy the second half, but at the end of the day, it is up to the city council to decide who buys the property. But again, tonight, the commission is just charged with determining whether this right-of-way is needed for a public purpose. So I'll have three photos, the third photo will be the most important, but this just shows the house at the north end that's requested vacation. This is looking down the north end, north, or looking from the north end, so looking towards the south across the half of the alley that's already been vacated, you can see the property owners paved a nice driveway in this area. And then this third picture is looking north from Shaw Street, so you can see there's no developed right-of-way, there aren't any properties that currently use the alley to have access to the property. So again, staff is charged, or charged with just determining whether this right-of-way is needed for a public purpose. We feel that there are three conditions that are needed to ensure that the vacation and conveyance doesn't become problematic for the surrounding properties, and the first of those is just reservation of any easements for any existing utilities. The second is reservation of an easement to, for access to the small parcel that is owned by Polk County, I will show you that here shortly. And then the sec, the third is to provide a no-build easement for the existing garage that's on the property at 625 Southeast 10th Street. So on the map here, you can see Polk County owns this small parcel here that's landlocked, so staff's recommending that an easement be provided to allow access to this property until such time that it's conveyed. We did reach out to Polk County, and Polk County has no pro, plans to, I guess, use that little parcel that's hanging out there. They've owned it for about 50 years, I think they took it from a tax sale when the previous owner didn't pay taxes, then it eventually went back to the county. They said that they were unsuccessful in trying to sell it to the previous owner in the past, but looking at it now, there is a new owner at 1020 Shaw Street, so perhaps the new owner would be interested in buying this Polk County-owned parcel here, but. I guess that wraps it up for me, did anybody have any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Bert, could you show us the picture? I think it's looking to the north, it's the one with the trees.
Yeah.
Nice, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Whereabouts, is the alley there to the left or is it to the right?
Yeah, just generally in this area, it's hard to say exactly where it is.
That's what I needed to know, thank you.
Yeah, and I can go back to the aerial. You can see it's not really used for anything.
Bert, could you explain what a no-build is?
Sure, yeah, the building code requires any building to be at least five feet from a property line, just for fire code purposes, but in this instance, there's an existing shed on that property to the west, and so it's just providing a no-build easement to ensure that no other buildings get built within five feet of that shed. So say the property to the east buys the entire right-of-way, that no-build easement would just ensure that no buildings get built too close to that building. With buildings, if you can't meet fire code, meaning if you can't provide a fire-rated wall, then you have to have that five-foot setback. In this instance, it's not reasonable to require that existing property owner to retrofit the garage with a fire-rated wall, so it's easier just to require a no-build easement to ensure nothing gets built too close.
Any further questions from commission? Okay, thank you, Bert. Does the applicant hear? May I come forward? You have 10 minutes, if you can state your name and address.
My name, Thikran Mehdawi, 11 1013 Scott Avenue. At the beginning, I would love, thank everyone who actually helped me, whether inside or outside, thank you so much to everyone. I submit my request for other half of the alley, I standing here for second time, I've been here 2019, and I gotta just have the alley today, I would like have the other part of the alley, plus the spot from Polk County. I'm sorry, maybe I'm shaky, because when I'm standing here, it's not easy at all, totally not easy. I feel my heart almost will come out of my, so I do apologize, but I would like have approval for both, actually, my request for the other half of the alley and for the Polk County spot, because there is no enter to the Polk County spot or exit either the alleyway, never ever. So I would like have both of them, I would like to care of it, join to my property, make it completely different. By the way, there is too many trees over there, weeds growing randomly, and sacks, snakes everywhere, so I would like to care with that area.
Can you, what, what's your property address again?
1013 Scott Avenue.
13 Scott, okay. Okay.
If you get me approved, will have positive impact, not only on me, but on everyone around this spot, believe me.
Okay.
I will take care of it.
Any questions from commissioners?
Yes, my question is, do you disagree with anything that the, the department said, the three conditions, do you disagree with any of them? They have three recommendations, do you disagree with any of the three? It's on page three. Staff recommends approval, if you, with those three conditions, do you agree to these three conditions?
I agree, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
And as staff also stated, it's up to the city council to decide who that property is being sold to, so do you understand that tonight, we're just deciding whether or not the city can sell it?
Yeah, what the commission is charged is doing is making a recommendation on if the alley is needed for a public purpose, and so that recommendation goes on to city council, and then, there's really like a two-step process, is first, when we're going to sell right-of-way, we have to vacate it, or we have to decide, is it needed for a public purpose, and if it's not, then we can vacate it and then we can sell it. This commission is part of the front part of that process, the beginning, where we just decide, is the pub, does the public need this anymore? And so that's what we're discussing tonight, just to clarify for you and, and the, the audience.
Okay.
Also, the Polk County piece, we, we don't have anything to do with that, either.
Right, the Polk County piece is a completely different project. Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If you can sign your name and your address on that white sheet right there? Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this item? Okay. Anyone who's neutral? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and then open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
I move staff.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And Justin, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay.
Move to staff.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number five, a request from MMR Enterprises for vacation, vacation of an L-shaped alley right-of-way located in the vicinity of 2400 Cortland Drive, bounded by Kirkwood Avenue to the north, Cortland Avenue to the east, to allow the vacated area to be assembled and maintained for private use. And Shriyoshi is here from staff to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Shriyoshi Chakrabarti, planning staff. Item five is a vacation request for an alleyway that's in the vicinity of 2400 Cortland Drive. The request specifically is to vacate about 11,000 square feet of an L-shaped alleyway. Just to give you a little bit context, this vacation request was actually submitted by the property that's right here, just to the south of the alleyway that starts at Cortland Drive. If we had proceeded with just vacating the portion that's adjoining the, the parcel at 2400, it essentially creates a dead-end right-of-way, which we're not supportive of, therefore, staff extended the area that's being proposed for vacation all the way up to Kirkwood Avenue so as to not create a dead-end alleyway. We did consult with the city's Public Works Department to ensure that there wasn't a need to maintain that alleyway for maintenance or access purposes, and we did get their confirmation on that. So that's the area that we are looking at right here, all the way from Kirkwood down to Cortland Drive. This is a, an exhibit of the, of the alleyway, and I have some pictures. As you can see here, this is looking from Cortland Drive further west, and the property that's adjoining seems to have encroached into the alleyway and has expanded their parking and storage into the alleyway area. This is looking south from Kirkwood Avenue, and the alleyway right here seems to be providing some access to the, the properties adjoining, but here is a screenshot of the aerial which will show you, and I can orient you right here, so the, the beginning of the alleyway by Cortland Drive is right here, here is the other portion by Kirkwood Avenue. So this is essentially the only portion that's currently being used, the rest of the alleyway is fairly overgrown and appears not to be used for any access purposes. Staff did not find any existing utilities and so on on the proposed vacation area and has determined that it's not necessary for public access purposes, therefore, staff is recommending approval of the vacation request for this entire L-shaped alleyway from Kirkwood to Cortland Drive. We received one comment card in support, and this is the consent map. So that, that concludes my presentation, I do want to point out again, as with the previous cases as well, here we're looking at the first piece, which is the vacation request. Once the vacation has been recorded by city council, city will contact the individual property owners that adjoin the, the alleyway that's being vacated to see if they would be interested in purchasing any portion of the, of the alleyway that joins their property. So that would be the next step following vacation. If you have any questions?
I have a quick one. One of the things mentioned in the city report was that on July 17th, there was a zoning notice of violation regarding the gravel in the front yard?
Yeah.
Which you showed a picture of. What will have to happen to that? How, how can that be resolved with, with the vacation of the alleyway?
The, the applicant that is, that adjoins the property here that's encroached into the alleyway is interested in purchasing the alleyway, so they will be purchasing this area that's currently. that's currently public right-of-way and they're encroaching into. They would have to address the issue of the gravel that's been encroached onto the lawn and the other areas. But it would not be a public right-of-way anymore if they purchased the property. That would be conveyed over to them. So, it'd be private property.
Yeah, the crux of the issue was the encroachment into the right-of-way. And so, if the right-of-way is no longer right-of-way, you know, it's a good question.
Sorry. We can wait until you come up.
They're separate issues. One is just like an enforcement thing. It may or may not be relevant. But really, what the Commission needs to focus on is their public purpose for this alley. And we're saying no. We'll sort out the details of enforcement and sale later.
And if the property owner to the north, 602, if they're interested in purchasing their portion, then of course, that issue would have to be also resolved. Because as you saw in the picture, they're encroaching into the entire alleyway now. But if only a part of the alleyway is being conveyed to the property owner at 2400, then they would have to address that encroachment issue.
Any further questions for Staff?
Did you have on your presentation, were there any cards that had come back? For some reason, I think I saw one.
Yeah, there was just one. And it's actually from the applicant that came in. The property at 2400.
Thank you. Thank you, Sri Oshie. Okay, is the applicant or representative for them here? Okay, if you would state your name and address. And you have 10 minutes. Oh, at the microphone.
My name is Mark Davis, 2669 Brookview Lane, Van Meter, Iowa.
Go ahead.
I would just... My tenants and I have been maintaining that area of the property for the past seven years. We've removed trees, volunteer trees, things like that. It's been mowed. The shed that's shown in the picture has been moved off of the alleyway. And the tenant's been served notice to remove the gravel. And she's working with Jesse Torres, the city engineer, to properly establish what's to be put there. The only issue the city had was that it was gravel. It wasn't concrete or asphalt.
The Commission have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. If you would sign into the white sheet there. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor of this item? Yes? You would like to speak in favor of this item?
Yes, I'm in favor of it.
Can you come forward and state your name and address? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Zatoli, 718 Kirkwood Avenue. I'm just two houses over from the people that are requesting this. I'm in favor of it, but I don't understand if it's an alleyway. I didn't know it was an alleyway. Are we talking about closing both ends of it? And they're talking about the homeowners being able to purchase? I'm not quite sure I understand what we'd be allowed to purchase.
Yeah, so the... Yes, this would be... And this isn't really a fully developed alley. So, I mean, there's not a lot to do to, you know, close it, so to speak. But in general, the... Once we get past the kind of the ideas, is this needed for a public purpose? You know, we've kind of talked about that. It doesn't appear that... The public doesn't need a drive-through here. It doesn't appear to us. So, our recommendation from this board will go on to the council. And then, if the council agrees with that, they'll direct our real estate folks in the engineering department to reach out to property owners and to talk to property owners about buying... Whether or not you're interested in buying the alley portion that adjoins your property. And everybody gets the first take at their half of what adjoins their property. If you don't elect to purchase, then, you know, a neighbor may have the option to buy some of the other half. Maybe, you know, instead of meeting you in the middle, they might buy all the way over to your property line if it's a neighbor on the opposite side, for example.
Okay. Or we would be able to extend, if we have a chain-link fence out there, we could extend it around that area.
Yeah, if you... Once you own it, then it's... I mean, once we vacate it and would sell it to you, it's your private property. You could put a fence on it. You could build on it unless there's some utility or some sort of easement. But it becomes... If you buy it, it becomes part of your property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for signing in. Is there anyone else here in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor of this item? Yes, you may come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Jennifer Gomez. I used to live at 722 Kirkwood Avenue. My son purchased the property from us. He is in the back door. I'm just representing him for... So, he owns this portion, or he lives right next to this here and this. And then, he owns this lot here. So, I guess the question is, is if he were... So, if he doesn't purchase that, other people can purchase that. And then, he would have... How would he get access to his back lot? And we lived there since August of 2000 to 2019, April of 2019, when he purchased it. Nobody... No city has ever come in and maintained, mowed, anything. Didn't even plow, nothing. They plowed the one across the street. So, we've put rock in. We've, you know, did all of that. We even clean up when some of the neighbors throw their twigs or stuff over. Because we've been told by the city that we had to pick it up. So, I guess my thing is, is if we mowed all the way down, then we would mow this back here, and he does too. So, I guess for that many years of him and his family owning that, why would he have to purchase it?
Well, it's... It may be what we term more like a paper alley in the sense that it doesn't... It's not fully developed, and people don't realize it's there. But it is publicly owned land. So, it belongs to the public. So, we have to go through the vacation process.
Right after we moved in, he was four. And he was coming up from the backyard. And some truck... He just got to the back door. Some truck come flying in there and went down to the back. But that was, you know, like I said, in August of 2000.
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think, for your family or your son to, you know, to acquire this.
Yeah, he's got three kids, you know. They go in the backyard and play, you know. The little ones don't by themselves. But when, you know, the nine-year-old does, or when the cousins are around, you know, they do. So, I guess my thing is, is if he would have to then... Would he be then eligible to purchase what adjoins to his back lot as well? That half?
Yeah. He's going to get first shot on the half that affronts that. And then, the other leg, the north-south leg as well. And these are covered... We don't really... At this stage, we're more the big-picture people. So, those nuanced discussions happen with our engineering staff.
This is my first time ever getting anything. Like I said, we've lived there for years and never had any issues until recently. The guy next door has an Airbnb. And he's, you know, called the city on us or on him because, you know, he wanted to, I think, go back and around and get to that property. So...
And if you have general questions too, our staff can talk to you after this item, whatever.
And do you... I mean, I know it just depends too. But is there like a certain amount of what's...
Yeah, that's not really decided at this meeting.
I... It's out of our purview. We... I couldn't tell you what the going rate is. But our real...
And so, would I just contact?
Yeah, why don't... Sri Oshie will follow you out and kind of talk about the process a little bit further. Sri Oshie, you don't have the next item, do you? Do you do? Okay, well then, Burd or Nick will follow you out and can kind of talk to you about the process. And just kind of let you know where you've... You know, where we are and where you can interface.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If you can sign into the white sheet. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in support of this item? Anyone who would like to speak against this item? You can come forward. Just state your name and address.
Hi there. Thank you for hearing us today. My name's Colleen McLean. I purchased the home at 608 Kirkwood, which is right... If you look at the photo, right behind... Yeah, right there. Right where the X says. Purchased my home in September of 2020. I'm actually kind of driveway into a mass junk cars, campers, utility trailers, kitty litter. After I moved in, it became... I did, at that point, I reached out to the owner of MMR Enterprises, Mark Davis. Mark offered no solution and did not intend to correct his tenants. I do have emails. It's at this time that I then reached out to the city for assistance for the first time. After I involved the city, the behavior of the tenants at 2400 Cortland became harassing. They created many burn... Open burn piles. I and others had to call in the fire department. They began lighting professional-grade fireworks over my garage at all hours of the night, most recently, September 24th, or last week. There have been what sounds like gunshots that were shot into the air. It became more... The easement at that point became more about safety, a buffer for safety for me, than just about my personal use of being able to use the easement. I did, at that point, hire a survey company to do a survey, so I could install a fence. My property line actually goes out a lot farther than my fence does. And after I had the survey pins in, the tenant at the rear of 2400 Cortland dug up my survey pins. And when confronted by me, blamed it on the tenant in the front and then later admitted that he'd done it because he'd hit his foot on the survey pin. And he didn't know what it was. Well, it also had a wooden stake that said "Property Marker" with the orange flag on it. At that point, I called Mark Davis from MMR, and he told me that his tenants are not his problem and to call the police. I have emails to the city, including... I think you're included on some of these, dating back to September of 2021, that I've saved, that I can forward to anybody who'd like to provide their email, where I'm seeking resolution and just joint use of the easement. There has been record of 911... There has to be record of 911 calls, responses from the fire department and police. I have communications from Sue Ann Donovan, Assistant Director of Neighborhood Services, back from June of 2022, looking into putting 2400 Cortland on the nuisance property list. The police refer me to the city. The city refers me to the police. I was told it would do me no good to purchase the easement because all adjoining owners would have to agree. So, it shouldn't worry me because 2400 Cortland would never be able to purchase it either. Yet, here we are. I am not able to maintain my lawn in the back of my property for fear of running into the tenant in the rear of 2400 Cortland, who calls me a B-I-T-C-H and a C-U-N-T. My understanding is that if I come here and I tell you that I do not agree with MMR Enterprises purchasing the easement behind me, they cannot purchase the area behind my home. My question to you is this. What right do I have to live peacefully in my home? The answer, for any attorneys here, the answer is I have the right to quiet enjoyment and to not live in fear for my personal safety or the safety of my property. I would ask you to decline MMR's petition to purchase the easement and follow through on promises to enforce city ordinances, maintain order, and provide peace and safety to residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this item? Okay, seeing none. The applicant now has time for rebuttal.
As far as any of the issues, Mark Davis, 2669 Brookview Lane, Van Meter, Iowa. As far as any of the issues with the tenants, I've gone through all the legal process that I've been able to go through. There haven't been any more fires where they were burning brush or anything in the back in the past 18 months. I've addressed that with all the tenants. The shed that was on city property has been removed. And it's only been parked on by two different vehicles in the past 18 months. As far as fireworks, I have never been over there when any fireworks have gone off or anything else like that. And as far as the survey stake being removed, I don't have anything to do with that. I've talked to the tenant. Neither tenant admitted to doing anything like that, and I don't see why they would. We've taken time, planted plants on the hill behind her garage because it looked bad. There's overgrown with weeds, noxious plants, poison ivy. And we planted hostas there, so it looked better for my tenants. She told my tenants that if they weren't removed, she was going to come out and spray everything with brown dope. She's been very irascible, screaming, yelling, not very nice. When she did call me, she was very nasty on the phone. That's all I've got to say about that. So, that's my version of the story. You can listen to whichever one.
Okay. I have a question. So, you own the property at 2400 Cortland Drive, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do you... So, is that an adjoining... Is that a duplex with 2402?
Yep, that's a duplex. I also own the unit just to the south of that.
Okay. And so, the driveway for 2400 and 2402 is... Are both of them accessed by the south driveway?
Yep, they both go through that driveway.
Okay. So, the area that's gravel right now is, you know, the easement for the alleyway. And so...
The tenant for the front apartment, 2400, parks her two cars in that alleyway.
Okay.
Once you get past my property, the alleyway is impassable. It's trees and brush. There's no way to get anywhere back there.
Okay. But is the official parking for that unit, is that behind to the west? Behind the house?
Yes. Yep, two spots are allocated per unit.
Okay. So... Okay. So, the official parking is behind the house, but they've been parking in the alleyway?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Do Commissioners have any other questions?
Is parking allowed in an alley by city ordinance?
No, I, excuse me, sorry, I forgot to turn the mic on. Yeah, just park, maybe, you can't just park in the alley. You'd have to leave it open to...
So the answer is no?
Right.
Okay. And if someone gained access to that property, would they be able to park in it if the easement was vacated?
The right of way, if the right of way is vacated and everybody, a joint, buy, you know, gets their parts, then, you know, it's, it's possible that some parking could be developed over there. It'd have to be, you know, done in accordance with standards.
Okay.
The vacation, the vacation, this requested vacation and then, and sale isn't going to just clear up on itself any outstanding enforcement issues. That, that's kind of its own process.
And Mr. Davis, what is your intent for this request?
It's just that I've been maintaining that alleyway for the past eight, nine years. There were volunteer trees all over the place, weeds, poison ivy, and so my tenants and I have been maintaining that area instead of the city maintaining it. So my, I'll have the, the tenant in the front will be able to then park on the gravel that's already there that the city had to begin with.
And you have interest in the entire vacation of the alley, if possible, or you really just want your portion of it?
Just the first 140 feet.
Okay, thank you.
The rest of it's impassable. I think it should just be sold to the other adjacent landowners.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Will.
Is the, are the tenants at 2400 or 2402 ever using the alley going north from the, your parking lot, using the alley either as an access or an exit?
I think what he's asking...
They probably occasionally used it. Usually they don't go through there. It's too steep. But they can exit the, the parking area at the rear to the west, and then they go through the lot there.
So the answer is yes, occasionally?
Yep, they've occasionally used that to exit the property. Very occasionally.
And if the alley were vacated and you bought your half, I suppose they'd still be able to do that. Is that correct?
There may not be an answer. I'm not sure it would be wide enough to do that, or if people were to put fences on it...
It's a theoretical question. I'm just wondering, you know, how much activity, if there is any activity along that line from your tenants?
It's a very small amount. The tenant in the front in 2400, she runs a construction business, and she's not good at backing a trailer, so sometimes she'll pull through so her trailer, she doesn't have to have her trailer with materials on it sitting in the street.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll now close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay. Any discussion? Any commissioners would like to discuss that?
Can you show the city recommendation? Can you put up the...
Yeah, put back.
The...
So again, remember, we're just asking, the question before us is, is this needed for a public purpose?
So I'll go against staff.
Okay. Do you want to put any reasoning behind that?
I think those neighbors have some value in being able to use that alley, so looking out for the neighborhood's best interest, that it might be best for the people that live along there. And we do have one person who has spoke, you know, pretty passionately for the position, that, you know, we, we have to listen to neighbor, neighbors and neighborhood and the people that live here that are residents of the city of Des Moines. So, I understand. I, I live in a neighborhood. I have issues. There's things you've got to use your judgment and your education to base that on, and I feel that, that is the best intent for this board.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, we can vote on the motion. All those in favor of denying the request, raise your right hand. Justin, how do you vote?
I vote to deny.
Deny? Okay, sorry, I should have asked for the denials first.
I guess we need clarification. Are you against the motion or are you supporting the motion of denial?
Supporting the motion of denial.
Okay, so you're in favor of the motion?
Okay.
So we have four, four, right?
Well, all those...
Yes, sir.
All those against the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, so it's four, four, correct?
Motion fails.
Okay.
Do we have any counter motions?
Just because nobody's else speaking, this is a difficult issue because I, I do think that there are at least a couple homeowners who are, are using this or have maybe some reservations about it being vaca, you know, vacated as an alleyway. But I also don't see that the city really is in need of keeping the alleyway. It's not being used for the full length of it. It's not being maintained by the city, so I'm not sure why it wouldn't be sold to homeowners.
You know, Madam Chair, Des Moines has had in the 19th century an unenviable heritage of laissez-faire, which means that a developer could do anything a developer wanted to do and did do, and it's resulted in any number of doglegs and dead ends and T intersections and you name it. And the city has struggled with that over the years to try to correct it, and the city is still doing, doing that and doing, you know, a good job when, when it's really important. This is bizarre, this particular one, and my, I, I mean, this isn't our problem, really. It's the real estate people that have the problem, but what happens if one of these little parcels in the back, nobody wants? I mean, that seems equally strange as well. Personally, I don't see that there's a public need for this alley as it is now, so that's my two cents.
So my understanding is that, like, one of the concerns was safety, and, you know, if she could have control over that space, she could, and the other neighbors could also. We can't drive through it right now, correct?
Right.
No, only to, to the back of your house it's drivable?
Yeah.
No, she drives into the back of the apartment and pulls through.
Well, yes, for the home, for the residence that...
The public hearing part's closed, so the, we have to just keep it to the commissioner.
Right, so, so it's my understanding that owners of 2400 use the alleyway for parking, and the owner who's three houses from the corner is able to access the back of the property, except for being blocked. But it, I don't know that it's really a maintained alleyway for any further than that. It's hard to tell by the photo that it's, it...
Yeah, and, and we've had, I mean, coming into this meeting, we've had conversations with, with the presenter, or not the presenter, the neighbor that's indicated the concern, and my understanding was that she was interested in buying her part of the, you know, vaca, she was actually support, at different points, we've actually, she's asked us to vacate it and so she could buy her part of it. So I...
Right.
I don't know that this is really, well, staff recommendation's already on the floor. This is not needed, from our perspective, this is not needed for a public purpose. So the, the idea of who it gets sold to and stuff is not our, it's not our process. That's real estate, and that's up to them to figure out what, you know, who's willing to do what and what we're, what the city's willing to live with.
Is there another motion that we could give a try?
Well, you can give the counter, you can give the counter motion and see if anybody's changed their mind on the other side, and if not, then I think that we'll, I would assume we'll move on to council with no recommendation.
So, so I'm going to move staff, and I'm going to suggest that it can kind of, it can achieve what you're looking to do, which is providing neighbors their access. We're not denying it. We don't maintain it. There's no public need for us to retain it.
Correct?
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to move, I'm going to throw it out there. I'm going to move staff. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those against? And Justin, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Okay.
Motion carries five, three.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nine, a request from Brew Oil LLC for property located at 4140 Park Avenue. Sri Oshie is, from staff, is presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sri Oshie Chakrabarti, Planning Staff. Item nine is a rezoning request for a property at 4140 Park Avenue. The request is to rezone the property from RX1 to MX3, Mixed Use District, to allow the development of an existing building as a convenience store and to also allow liquor, alcoholic liquor sales. So I'll give you a little context of the area. So this is at the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Park Avenue and Southwest 42nd Street. The current zoning of the property is RX1. This is, used to be a convenience store. It's currently vacant now. There was also gasoline sales with pumps. Those things have been removed. What the applicant is proposing right now is to redevelop this existing building that's vacant into a convenience store and to also allow the sales of food, coffee, as well as alcoholic liquor, wine and beer. So in the RX1 district, the applicant is able to, to develop this as a convenience store with the sale of the things that they're proposing, except for alcoholic liquor, which requires the rezoning to MX3. They would still need a conditional use either way from the zoning board of adjustment for the, for the alcohol sales, and they cannot exceed 40% of the, of the revenue. However, the rezoning that we are looking at here right now is because of the fact that the applicant has chosen to sell alcoholic liquor in addition to, in addition to beer and wine. The area here, there's multi-family across the street on Southwest 42nd. To the north, there's mostly single family. Here to the, to the east, so there's a mix of uses in the area. This is a conceptual sketch of what the applicant potentially wants to do. As you can see, they, they want to maintain the existing driveways. They'll be redoing, repaving the driveways and the, and the parking lot. This is the existing building. They plan to install new sidewalk along Southwest 42nd. They are also proposing a drive-up window for collection of items that they're selling. I will point out that, that alcohol sales are not allowed through a drive-up window. Here's some pictures of the, the existing vacant building, just to give you a context of the area. This is looking south. Here's the multi-family buildings across Southwest 42nd. This is looking west on Park Avenue from the intersection. And again, this is another view of the parking lot. This is the area where the, potentially the future proposed sidewalk would, would go, would be installed. Staff has reviewed this request, and while a limited retail sale, including a convenience store that allows the sale of beer and wine and other convenience items, is allowed and appropriate for this location, staff has concerns with the rezoning to MX3 district just for the allowance of alcoholic liquor. And I'd like to go to this map here just to show you why staff had concerns about this. As you can see, this is a, zoomed out a little bit, so you can see the zoning in this area. This is the subject property right here, RX1. As you can see, there isn't any MX3 districts in the vicinity of this particular site. MX3 districts are generally concentrated on high-capacity corridors and intersections where similar intense uses have already been established. Staff felt that rezoning to MX3, just to allow the sale of alcoholic liquor, would not be appropriate because the MX3 district would not be compatible with the, with the other zoning districts that are in the immediate vicinity. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this rezoning request. The applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting, and they can give you a detailed summary, but I'll just, I'll just stay here for a minute so you can read. They had a couple neighbors that attended, and seemed like they didn't have any major concerns with the, with the rezoning request and the proposed use. This is the, a list of neighbors that received the invitation to the neighborhood meeting as well as the letter from the applicant explaining what's going on and an invitation to, to attend the neighborhood meeting. We received one card in support of the project, another one undecided, another one undecided, and then a few in opposition. And I'll just zoom in a little bit so you can read. Couple more in opposition. And this is the consent map. As you can see, we, we received some cards from the residential development in the vicinity, as well as a property to the southeast. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
If I, before we get into questions, I did want to elaborate on one thing. The Sri Oshie, the map, that does a great job. I'm glad that's in there of that, kind of the broader zoning of the area. The other thing, too, to keep in mind is that this rezoning request requires a land use plan amendment. So the other thing, the other map that we looked at, too, was like looking at the land use map and what the community commercial designation is what really needs to go with that. MX3 is, Sri Oshie did a great job of talking about where MX3 is supposed to be, you know, the high-capacity corridors. That community mixed-use land use designation is also that same, that same thinking, you know, the, our busier, main thoroughfares. Currently, this area is, is it neighborhood mixed-use, is there?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to emphasize that and make sure that we don't get, as you think about this application, it's really two things. It's amending the land use plan and changing the zoning. So it's, it's not just as simple as, oh, I just have a zoning thing to think about. We're also thinking about the future land use map, and anyway, thank you.
Yes, Carol.
Did Traffic and Transportation have any recommendation to close that curb cut on Park?
They did not have any specific recommendation at this time, but when they're working through the site plan, that's when the access issues would be addressed.
Okay, thank you. And then, the conditional use comes with the 40% max alcohol sales. Does a use of a convenience store without liquor, does it have any sort of maximum percent of alcohol sales? In other words, I guess my question, I'll go to the applicant later when he comes up. Brew, I thought that was going to be beer, and it looks like maybe it's coffee?
It's coffee.
It's coffee, okay. So, the focus will be on coffee?
Well, they, they're, and the applicant can speak more in detail about their proposal. What they indicated in the application is they want to provide a variety of different products at the, at the convenience store, and that would include everything from coffee to food, as well as other things you might find at convenience store, and alcohol as well.
Okay, and they would be able to be open 24/7, like a come and go, or?
They, they could be open, but the, the hours for the alcohol sales would be determined during their conditional use approval. Specific timings would be part of the, the condition of the conditional use approval.
But they don't need that just to sell beer, the conditional use, or do they?
They do.
Oh, they do? Okay, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Any, any kind of alcohol would require a conditional use.
Got it. Thanks.
I do have a question. There is another RX1 zoning that is down west on Park Avenue, I think where George Vlog Parkway joins. Is that, do I have that right? Am I remembering them right?
Where it joins Park Avenue?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to go to that slide.
That's a Casey's. I know, it's further out, right. So there is a convenience store there. I, I don't know if it's still there. Is there a restaurant there?
Are you talking about this?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, Jethro's is there.
Yeah, I believe it's a restaurant.
Right. So, I guess my question for those establishments that are there, do any of, they can't sell alcohol, is that correct? Because the conditional use is not allowed in an RX1 zone?
Well, Jethro's is a restaurant.
Okay, so that's a difference.
Yeah.
I went into the Casey's two days ago, and they do not sell liquor.
Yeah, I think they have beer and wine. Do they have a conditional use permit? Okay, but they predate, probably predate the requirements of their grandfather.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would also clarify that the request here is for off-premise consumption of alcohol, so there wouldn't be any sitting down and drinking.
Right, okay. So, they're handled differently, restaurants versus convenience stores?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're not dealing with the drive-up window during this, during this meeting, right?
The.
That would be part of a site plan, so it's not really?
That would, we just wanted to note that it wouldn't be allowed. Alcohol sales wouldn't be allowed at the drive-up window.
Okay. Thank you.
It's possible they could have maybe coffee or something. Then we'd sort that out at the site plan.
Wait. Any further questions from commissioners for staff? Justin, do you have any questions?
No questions at the moment.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Shri Oshie. Is the applicant here to present? You would state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes.
Richard McCollum, Sandborne, Iowa. I am the general manager of Brew Oil, and I oversee our operations. And we are looking to grow into Des Moines. We do have a lot of sites in northwest Iowa. And I do have this.
We can switch to a document cam, can you? Is it just that one? It's already on.
Very efficient, thank you. So, real quick, a little bit about Brew Oil. We are, you know, obviously, convenience location. We have a lot of fuel sites, but we also, in our fuel sites, have developed our coffee brand, which is where the Brew name really came from. And so, we uniquely have a lot of premium coffee products, things that, you know, frappes, fruit smoothies, and the different ice cream drinks that, you know, regular coffee shops, more high-end coffee shops would make. And so, that's a little bit about our brand and why it uniquely, you know, it does tie in with the convenience, where we do offer, usually have the beer and wine and liquor available as well. But in our convenience brand, we offer those foodstuffs as well. We do a lot of fried chicken in our sites and hot and ready, different products that customers can come through and pick up, either order ahead or pick up, and that are hot and ready to go. Our Brew brand and the coffee-related products that we do make available is something that we really feel and we have in other communities, La Mar's and Idah Grove in northwest Iowa, where we offer. And it really is a unique site where, yes, the convenience is all there, and it's a really family-centered kind of location in town because the kids love to come in and get those different fruit smoothies and ice cream-related products that we make in our coffee shop. So, we definitely feel that improving this property that we have purchased, and we would appreciate, you know, we do appreciate this consideration, and we definitely look forward to hearing you guys' responses.
Is your business model based, I mean, would it collapse if you didn't sell liquor?
No.
Okay.
Do you have any other locations that do not serve liquor? Sorry. Sell liquor, not serve, I'm sorry. Semantics.
Yes. In our convenience store locations, we have many that do not sell liquor. They do sell beer and wine usually, though.
Okay. Any further questions?
I will add, too, if I'm allowed to, that the drive-up window really is fed by the coffee products, as is in our other sites, where even if it is allowed to dispense the other products, it's the coffee customers that can zip up and grab a quick coffee and get down the road. That is our primary reason for requesting that.
Any further questions from commissioners?
Yeah, will you guys be selling gasoline at this location or not?
That is not in the plans.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you would sign in on that white sheet. Thank you. Are there any members of the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience who would like to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, are there, is there anyone who would like to speak, who would like to have neutral comments? I'm just curious, because this is our last item on the agenda tonight, so still members of the audience, no one wants to speak, correct? No? Okay.
What is continuing? We're to drop the owners for a moment, please.
Oh, is this regarding another item?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That, the item was, Williams, which number was that?
Eight.
Eight?
I remember, are you referring to?
That's indefinite.
Okay, so that, that was the, that one's been continued. That means the application wasn't withdrawn, but the applicant has asked for the item to not be considered tonight. So, you're the property owner?
Yes.
And so, the developer, the developer that was looking at the property that instigated this rezoning asked, said they'd like more time to think about it. They're not 100% sure how they're going to move forward or not.
Um, is?
So, you'll want to reach out to them.
Is there someone from staff who could maybe answer his questions off the, this item?
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Going to close the public hearing on item number nine and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
So, if we move staff, they can seek, they can still seek, some board of adjustments can provide an access to beer and wine?
Yes, current zoning allows beer and wine, so.
Okay, perfect. So, I'm going to throw it out there and say I'm going to move staff.
May I ask a question of staff? There were a number of objections to the proposal, the application. Would that require a supermajority of the council later on?
Tyler, can you pull this up? Just look at the percentage. So, it looks like only 4% of the respondents, the land area, is against, so it would require over 20% to have, require the supermajority.
You say it would require a super, it would not?
It would not. It's just 4.408% against.
So, these dots up here, are those apartment dwellers? Is that?
That's correct.
Yeah, condo, townhome.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I do want to add to my motion. I think it, I think it looks like a great development. I think it'd be beautiful on that corner, and I think we'd be lucky to have it in our community.
Your question, Carolyn, was absolutely spot-on, and about the business model, that it wouldn't collapse. I found that very compelling.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out one more thing in response to Will's question. The other thing that will require a supermajority vote from council would be if the commission were to recommend denial of the request.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from commission?
I agree, I think it's going to look beautiful, but I just want to confirm, based on what you just said, we're agreeing with the staff report, which is to deny the zoning request, correct? The rezoning. Okay, I just wanted, I just, in my mind, the double negative sometimes cloud. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, the denial of the rezoning would mean that they would not be able to seek a conditional use, is that correct?
To sell liquor.
To sell.
Just beer and wine.
Just the liquor.
Yes.
Okay. But they could still seek a conditional use for beer and wine?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And again, we're just making a recommendation to city council, who will make the actual decision.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion to move staff, please raise your right hand. Okay, Justin, how do you vote?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any committees or directors' reports?
Yeah, I just want to thank those of you that were able to get here. We were cutting it close and really appreciate you guys' dedication, and Justin, too, for calling in and helping us make this meeting happen. So, big thank you to all of you. Do we have, we were going to have a 5:30 session, it'll be the first meeting in November instead, so looking forward to that, but that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
You are currently the only person in this conference.